Be in no order, please. Place to the flag. Plaid allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. Intereign public for what you stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Reverend Matthews won't be here today. Have a motion to accept the agenda?
I may have some changes to the agenda.
Oh, yeah. Okay, which ones were any?
The first thing is we're on mitt number five. They're a little minutes because they're not ready. So we're going to omit number five.
Okay.
Yes, table the minutes. And then you have two possibly three add-ons. The first one is to receive a decision back from the county in regards to the B2 assisted living zone. The addition to the schedule. And that's in your packet. That was in everybody's packet. So you guys need to close that public hearing and then either vote to approve or deny the public to adopt that local law for the B2 zone. And then number two is there was an escrow that was deposited for Dunbar Towers for the inspections that are done there of $5,000. And there was never a written resolution or anything established to spend that money. But we have done the research, the building inspector and myself, the money is there. It does show up in our account. There is proof that it's there. And it's for our engineers inspection of Dunbar Towers and the work that's being done there. And he has bills that needs to be paid out of that escrow money. And then there was also the addition of a emergency purchase from the police department for air conditioning to service the air conditioner. So I don't know. Those are your three add-ons to the agenda.
I just want to add that it's to add the condition is here is two calls, which is coming from the appropriation number 83120 with 431, 431, which is ammunition. And the police department say they're going to use this on the budget to buy the 3,275. We have two calls here. Another one for $9,000, which is $9,150. So we have here two calls. Kind of an emergency list to do.
We have three calls, Carmen. We got one verbally and a written report to be in tomorrow. It was more money than with DT.
It's more money than this one. And there are no insurance, I understand. Do they insure it? Because they have to go in a group.
Of course they assure.
Besides for me, I made sure that he wasn't sure. So we have the other one that James changed too, that is more money than this one. So I just wanted to put in the agenda, whatever number, you know, to try to fix this item condition, which is broken since last year. We fixed it and then broke it again. And now we need to know the whole item condition, but just the compressor, I understand. That's what the guy is bringing. I said that's the only agenda.
All right, so we'll go to...
I need a motion and a second and roll call with the changes.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I make a motion with the changes.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, Carmen.
Yes.
Larissa.
Yes.
TC.
Yes.
All right. I just wanted to say something before I go with this. West Villa on Broadway, it's going down the West Villa. What are those housings again? West Villa?
West Broadway Villas.
West Broadway Villas. I'd like to thank James and Janine Gandy, the clerk. It was a project that we, they came to the village. It's the past on came to the village and they were looking for the support from the village to help them with this project. And they were looking for funding. It's affordable housing. It's good for the village because it's the rehab, the old West Villa on Broadway. But it's great for the village. They received about six and a half million dollars monies from grant money to fix that up. And with the help of the planning board, James and Janine pushing it, they had deadlines. This village board and the village met all the deadlines and it was real cooperative work, working together with them to get the project done and approved. And that's probably one of the biggest grants that they received. So I'd like to thank everybody that helped out on that, helping her. Those are the things that we should be working on and getting things forward. I appreciate it. All right? Okay, we'll go to six. Public hearing introduction of local law number six of 2013. The withholding of building permits and such until all dislinking current taxes are paid in full. Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, so we gotta open up a public hearing. Yeah. So we'll open it up at 7:05. This is number six. The board has anything?
Can you explain about the local law number six?
Number six.
The local law that the board had requested basically says that any type of approvals the village has can be withheld if taxes are not paid. There was a prior provision before dealing with, I believe, just building permits. Now this includes, this also includes sewer taxes, as I understand it, and also water taxes, water charges. So it just makes it more comprehensive.
So there's...
It's open for the public hearing. Public comment. Anyone has any comment on that? All right, the board, any comments?
No, we already know this is a good thing for the village to try to collect the taxes, which is, you know, it's a lot of money.
Okay, we'll close at 7:03. Can I have a motion to close?
I make a motion to close.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
All right.
Now we're going to vote and this law, I make a motion to vote and to comment, you know, effective today is local law number six, local law number one of 1996.
Second?
Wouldn't be affected before it's filed with the Senate.
Okay, yeah, thirty days.
I'll second.
Roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing, local law, amended local law of number one, 1996, section 45-15 entitled residency of deputy village clerk and deputy village treasurer.
I make a motion to open.
Okay, second to open up?
I'll second it.
At 7:08? Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes, to open the public hearing.
Okay, open up the public hearing. All right, anyone?
I just want to explain it. To make it correct, to have a deputy treasurer who live outside the house, you know, we open in this for anywhere in Suleon County. That's the only changes we do. We correcting the local law number one, 1996, 45-15.
Any comments from anyone? No comments? Okay, we'll close at 7:10.
Motion to close.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to close.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
And TC?
Yes.
Can we, I make a motion to vote and changes of the local law number one, 1996, 45-15, and the village call to comment effective in thirty days after the parliament's day is sent there.
Okay.
Second, take mine.
Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
And TC?
Yes.
Approval of bills to be paid in the amount of $543,297.92. You have a motion? No motion?
I make a motion.
Second? No second?
Well, I look at the bills and I, honest, I consult with the controllers and we need to pay the bills. I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution adopting budget transfer fiscal year ended July 2013. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to make the transfer.
Second?
With the addition, it's only one added more that is transferred to pay utilities and sanitation department.
Yes, that was put in your brackets.
That's where the only one change.
Janine, I didn't hear, that was with the correction that was made?
Yes, that was the correction that you already seen in the mail-in on our copy, yes.
Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Resolution awarding annual highway water sewer bids to various lowest bidders for fiscal year 2013, '14. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Resolution to request proposals for insurance brokerage for the village liability insurance policy and authorizing the clerk to notify the local newspaper. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion, I make a comment.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, Carmen?
Yeah, when this has been done, also it's going to be notified the insurance company now, no?
Yes, the current, yes. Yeah, the current provider, yes.
Okay. That's the only...
When is our current insurance?
July 31st. July 31st.
All right, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Resolution setting the public hearing date for Washaway and Wood Avenue for Reiki Avenue and Atwell Lane and making both roads a two-way travel. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion, but I need an explanation.
Second?
I'll second.
What are we going to do in Atwell?
The highway superintendent, he's at highway school this week, but he explained it to me. He said that on those roads, it's only a one-way traffic. And due to the school, there's a lot of congestion.
Oh, yeah.
So you can't get through. So he said, he went out, he measured the roads and it's enough space to have a two-way travel, that they can break up some of the congestion.
But that's only like the one block in there.
Yeah. And also on Washaway now, they use it for the...
Bus.
For the buses now. So it's enough space to have a two-way travel on that road, so to break up some of the congestion.
Okay, I know it's one...
What's good for a public hearing? A date?
The next meeting date, June 18th.
Next meeting? Is that good? Okay, June 18th. Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Resolution to request proposals for melon reclaim is paved and in place. Bid opening date Thursday, June 20, 2013, at 2:00 PM. Authorizing the clerk to notify the local newspaper. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing to spend chips monies in amount of $145,608.90 to pave and place and reclaim village streets as selected. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion with a comment.
And second?
I second with a comment.
Have we identified what streets we're going to pay with this $145,000?
Me and Jimmy looked at some streets, but if anyone wants to, the board members, if they want to go with Jimmy and pick out some streets, then we'll put them all together and see what streets you guys want to do.
I think so. We should follow like years past. He should give us the list and then we go and check and compare with other streets that may be worse than that one. So I think we should give it the list before he spends any money. Also, we should see the black tie, not all the time called one company only. We should check with other companies.
But the black tie bits were in. Those were the bits that he was...
Those bits are already in. So we have their... But I would really like to know about the streets and the names of the street. And just tell it to give us the list, like give it us in the past. That way we have a chance to...
Yeah. So you want to table it or should you...
No, I make a motion, but with the condition that he's going to give it us the list before he go and go black tie. He already made...
We'd like the name, the names of the streets that he's going to pave as well as which ones are worse and need to be handled right away.
Because even if the board, you could take a tour of the buildings.
We did that.
Can I just make a, make a suggestion to board? I think that maybe in table, it'd give us an opportunity of getting the list because there may be streets that you may not think that may not want, that you may not want on a, there may be another street. If we approve it now, that's saying this $145,000 is for the selected streets that were already selected, which we don't even know which ones we are, except the mayor and...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know all the streets. Let's table it.
And then just table and then let it to come with the list of all the street like he did before and then we see.
So what does table, what does table? Make a motion to table?
I make a motion to table.
Second? Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing emergency purchase of a hydrant attachment to clear dirty water on Thompsonville Road and Rockridge Drive for the water department from Smith's Wholesale in amount of $2,643.24. Appropriation 8340.234. Current account balance $2,975.31. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Resolution authorize the purchase of rooms for the street sweeter from United Rotary Brush Court source provider for highway department in amount of $1,004.8 from appropriation 5110 to 228. Current balance $17,370.60. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Resolution authorize the village clerk to refund Richardson's Court LLC for bond payment set up by planning board in amount of $19,000. Appropriation 0033101. Current account balance $19,000. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, Carmen?
No.
Larissa?
Yes.
This was, this money was, this money last meeting was told to go to the planning board. The planning board looked at all this and they said return the money. That's why...
My understanding, two members of the board was completely no and not including the chairman.
They voted?
One of them resigned because of that reason. I asked for no.
Okay, we voted. Larissa?
I don't feel comfortable with that money.
Who resigned?
Vandermon. All right. TC?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have the addendums. Which one was that again now?
The first addendum was to, you guys have to close the public hearing. That was back on... I believe it was our last meeting in April.
Last meeting was April 16th?
April 16th. And it was, the public hearing was left open because we had to allow the county 30 days to respond. And it took a little bit longer than 30 days, but they did send a response on May 31st.
Okay, so can I have a motion to close it?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Okay, what was the other one we had to move?
And the other one was the, there was an escrow deposit for Dunbar Towers for the work that's done there for the inspections, but it was deposited without a resolution from the board of trustees. And the amount is $5,000 that we need to come to the board. The amount, the money has missing in our account and our engineers waiting for payment. And we have not paid anything out because I had no backup of saying where, who authorized this money to be deposited. So...
I'm anxious from there. It's in the nation. That's an escrow money that's...
Exactly, escrow money.
That's Dunbar Tower.
Yeah, for Dunbar Towers.
The paid the engineer for inspection.
Yep.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
And what was the other? Okay.
Just one thing else on the public hearings. We have resolved the Medicaid transportation law pursuant to the court settlement. We're waiting for the county GML to review. I would ask the board to put that proposed, change the law on its June 18th calendar. We just simply held off getting it there until the GML was completed and settled that case. Just a technicality, I would ask that the board put that for a public hearing also on June 18th. It's kind of similar to the other one. We wait for the county to do the GML and then we finish our public hearing.
So we just don't need to set up a choosing heading for...
For the 18th, I recommend it can be after that, but we have time between now and the 18th.
Okay, I make a motion to...
Okay, second?
Put set up a heading for medical transportation.
All right, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
And TC?
Yes.
Now we have these, the three bids.
Is it three bids or two bids?
One was for...
It's two.
No, when according to the controllers, you know, like now, we just voted into emergency purchase. There was an emergency with no beds at all.
What is it?
Yes. But this, this is only...
Air conditioning.
It's not the whole item condition. It's just...
I understand that. All I'm just saying is, dude, if we had three bids, because that's one of the problems that the controller is knocking us now, is that when we purchase that, we don't have three bids. If we, if we didn't use all the paperwork where everyone signs off on, we couldn't completely do it because we don't have three bids. I understand that there's a third bid. Am I correct? Right?
But he says more money. It's verbal at this point, but it'll be written by tomorrow.
If we can get, if we can get the third bid, I would feel much, I would feel much better just doing it that way.
We can also, because of the time and the summer this year, we can also vote up to 3,500 to expense that set. If it's more than that, they have to come back to the board. You know what I mean? Vote into expense for the appropriation number 83120.431, which is the police department is expensing their money for ammunition to repair the item condition. So if we just vote to up to 3,500, it's already there, you know? But because, and then it take another three weeks, summer is already...
So what does vote?
Vote up to 3,500. This is more than 3,500 and then it has to come back to the board.
And where is it coming from again?
From the appropriation number 3120.431. That's ammunition. It's there 3,432. It's in a budget.
Can we give it to me 3120 again?
3120, 820, 3120. Point 431. It's there 3,432.
So cheap. So does that mean like for next year, we have to double up on ammunition? Because apparently we're not purchasing any ammunition this year.
No. No, what I'm working on is working on, it's almost completing our trade on some obsolete ammunition that we have. And we'll be able to get the ammunition that we need this year by doing a trade on calibers that we no longer carry.
So we already get...
There's also a group of anonymous citizens that would like to make contribution if we need to replace the ammunition.
So we'll do, so we'll just vote to do emergency purchase then?
Up to 3,500.
Up to 32?
35.
All right, 3,500.
If it's more than 3,500, it has to come back to the board.
All right, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
I'm going to say no.
All right, yes. I'd just like to make a comment real quick on that. I was, I went on a conference for a whole week. So as far as what the news put out there about a heating unit or anything like that, I came back Sunday night. I was awake for a whole week. So I don't know where they got that about, there was an issue about a problem with the heating unit or something like that. I was not aware of any of that. So I don't know why they would even put that in the paper. But all that stuff is all false. I was, I wasn't here Sun, I came back Sunday night. And this happened supposedly Friday or Saturday. I wasn't even in the, in the state. So I'd like to correct that to the press.
I just want to make a comment that the item condition was broken last year and they went fix where the people are working, but never worked really properly. So we, the mayor ordered in that time and James went and picked up those portable ones because we don't have no windows. The tube heat, so it's not really bringing a cool air. So I went myself persona on Friday inside the locker. It was 92 degrees on Friday when it was very hot. And then Sunday, I took my time when it was a little cool and came to the police department and went to their locker with their lacte women's, which is a room there, no windows. That day, it was cold and it was 89 degrees in there. My point is that we, when we, when the police arrest people, they are human beings. And this is an issue about human rights and also the police department has to work with the uniform and the vest and everything. And I think so it's time to fix it, correct it for this money, which is, it will maybe don't broke again. And maybe we don't even need another new one.
All right, Glenn, Glenn Goodale, you want to come up and just give a presentation?
Sure, maybe even students.
This is from, Glenn's from Barton Le Judice, one of the engineers.
At your meeting two weeks ago, you gave me a little time on your agenda to talk about the transportation enhancement grant. And if you recall, that was in relation to the Jefferson Street corridor upgrade. I talked about Sullivan Renaissance had provided some money to do this study and to do some cost estimates for the, to upgrade the corridor. And the reason why I came before you two weeks ago is that the federal government has transportation enhancement program funds. This is the last time they're doing this. It's like, it's going away after this time. And if you remember, about three years ago, the village was lucky to get it for the Route 42 sidewalks that go down to the high school. This is the same funding source this time. 80% would be paid by the state, 20% would be local. That 20% could be cash, could be in-kind services, it could be Jim's Department assisting. Met today with some county officials and your legislator, Alan Sorensen, and he thinks the county would be interested in assisting on the 20% part of it as, to assist the village with that. This grant is due on the 16th of August. One of the things that I did not talk to you about last time is that one of the ways that New York State wants to make sure applicants are serious about doing this and serious about following through is that they have required workshops. It's an all-day workshop that they're required, which they don't care if I go, and I will go, but somebody that either is an elected official or appointed by the village, could be the clerk, could be Jim, could be the building inspector, could be somebody sitting here, has to go to one of these workshops. Otherwise, you're not eligible to apply for the money. And the reason why they're doing that is that they want to make sure you understand that you're eligible, you're liable for the 20%. And also, if you remember with the grant on Route 42, you had to expend the money and then get it back from the state. So they also want to make sure that the village board understand, all village board and town boards understand that that's what the situation is. I think it took about three weeks every time we asked for reimbursement on that last grant, but that's the way they do that. So what we talked about two weeks ago is that I was hoping that the village board would move one way or another on this to give us time to write it. But also the dates of these trainings, one of them's in Poughkeepsie on the 12th and one of them is at the regional headquarters in Binghamton on the 17th. I can make myself available on either day. I could drive. But it is a full day, you know, nine to four training. And I'm sure it'll be very exciting.
When is the one in Albany?
It's Poughkeepsie or Binghamton.
Oh, Binghamton.
Poughkeepsie is on the 12th, Binghamton's on the... And I'm sure it'll be very exciting.
When is the one in Albany?
Uh, it's Poughkeepsie or Binghamton.
Oh, Binghamton.
Poughkeepsie is on the twelfth, Binghamton's on the seventeenth.
Only one board member or can be two?
Could, uh, I don't think they want more than two or three people to show up, but...
Only my question is, is it more than one?
Right. I'm sure the village could have more than one, I could, I will double check. And again, it could be a board member, it could, I'm not saying, Janine, that you wanna go to Binghamton, but, uh, sometimes they send clerks because it has to do with drawing down the money and, you know, issues, issues of that nature, uh, uh, come up. But again, it could be the building inspector, it could be the highway, um, D P W. So, I, I guess what I, what I was asking tonight is to, um, get a sense of the board if this is something that you wanna go through with and, and to, somebody has to commit to go to this exciting training.
Yeah, I think so, the, I would say the highway department and one board member can go. I think so that would be the match, anybody who wants to go, you sit there for eight hours.
I had said that, I was at the meeting with Ethan and, uh, and, um, Sorensen, Alan Sorensen at that two o'clock meeting. And I said, I'd asked the board if we can partner up with the county and combine the services. That way we don't, it would be a, a less of a hit with the, with the village paying the whole expense. And they are county and we are the village, so we should, you know, I'm, I would recommend that we partner up. Alan said he would check with the legislators, and partner it up, it'd be a lot less, we have to pay this money back within two years. So it would be a lot cheaper for all of us.
You mean for the twenty percent issue?
For the twenty percent get back. And then the, the county can, the, the county and the village could do it on the in-kind, so it might not even be in no, no cash at all, just the in-kind service.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor.
So that would be great.
So just to expand on that, I did meet with the highway superintendent, I keep saying that, is it a highway superintendent or a D P W?
Highway superintendent.
Okay. I met with the highway superintendent and a lot of the work that would be done on Jefferson Street, not a lot, some of it could be done with village forces. And, uh, the mayor is correct, uh, we did meet with Alan Sorensen, who represents the village in the, in, on the county legislature. And he's gonna talk to his colleagues, but he thinks that the county D P W may also be able to help with milling the road and, you know, some other work of that nature. Mayor, you're also correct in that if we apply in August, you'll find out right around the beginning of twenty fourteen whether or not you got funded. And it's probably gonna take close to a year or so before you would even have to spend any village money. So this is really a late twenty fifteen, early twenty sixteen project. So it's not something the village needs to budget for at the moment. Uh, I mentioned last time that our fee would be thirty-two hundred dollars to write this, and I am suggesting that we apply for around a half a million dollars.
And I did say another thing, I did recommend Carmen Rue to go up there as a board member. I did say that at the meeting. So if you, if, I mean, if we go with the, with it, I would, I had said, would you, would you go in the meeting?
Wait, he said three people in county, up to three people? Okay, we can go three, because we had to set up a meeting, but, uh, what is?
It's the twelfth in Poughkeepsie, which is obviously closer, or the seventeenth in Binghamton.
Well, Glenn, let's just say we will send designees, um, there will be, there will be designees that will go.
Sure.
And I think that the village, I think that if, if...
He would like to plan for the twelfth.
We should, we should go with, um, having you write it and meet the deadline.
All right, well, I will double check with the D O T and make sure they don't have a limit on how many people can go. But, um, I'm willing to go as part of my work to put this together, because sometimes you find out little hints within the boredom of the, of the training. But again, they, what they're gonna do is they're gonna have everybody sign in, and then when the grant is submitted, the, the head elected official of the village, which is the mayor, is gonna have to, it's gonna, there's a question that says, did you or a representative of the village attend the training and on what day? And you're gonna have to certify that that person was there, and they're gonna check the attendance list. And again, they're doing this, 'cause a lot of times people apply for these grants and they get them, and then they, all the paperwork starts, and then the village or town says, well, wait a minute, I didn't know we had to do this, and I didn't, they don't wanna waste time reviewing a grant. And also, only people who are serious about going after this money are gonna drive out to Binghamton. So that's another reason why they're doing it.
Plus, we got a lot of, uh, upfront already that we've been working on this thing for a couple of years with, with the Renaissance. A lot of the work is done.
And I, I just wanted to, um, to comment if the village board decides to move ahead with the, um, the grant proposal, which is, I think, I think is a good idea, 'cause as Glenn said, um, it's a limited, you know, opportunity. This funding is, is not gonna be around after this year, so you might as well strike while the iron is hot. But I know, um, there will have to be some paring down of, of some of the, the concepts, 'cause as Glenn said, you're looking at about a half a million dollars, so obviously the pedestrian safety, the sidewalks and the drainage improvements kind of take priority over the, you know, the aesthetic, making the corridor look nicer, which is what Renaissance is, is really interested in. So I'd like the opportunity to maybe work with the village board, um, and Glenn and Barton and Judas, and see if we couldn't use some of our resources and connections to maybe leverage, you know, some additional matching funds, you know, that would go towards some of the aesthetic, you know, parts of it, and maybe that would help. So I can't make any promises, but I'd love to, um, you know, to work and see what we could bring to the table.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
Do you plan for the twelfth meeting, um, the one in Poughkeepsie on June twelve?
Yeah.
And can you find out how many people can attend?
Yeah, I'll find out, so it sounds like June twelfth is, I mean, Poughkeepsie is obviously quicker.
What time is?
It's, um, starts at nine o'clock.
And finish?
Uh, four fifteen.
Very busy too. But it's good for the village, we just to spend time anyways.
Okay, so I just, again, there's really two issues. One is, you know, a, a, a vote yes or no to go after this, and, you know, knowing that you have to pay to, to, to get the grant written. And then the second issue is that a commitment that some, that at least one person is gonna go with me to this, because, um, otherwise we can't really apply.
I'll make a motion to, um, to allow, to authorize Barton and Judas to, to go after the, what's the name of the grant?
Uh, transportation enhancement program.
The transportation enhancement program.
All right, second. Okay, Roque Paul Harmon?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
Okay, so I, I will get back to you about how many people can go, and then we'll, but at least one, we're gonna have at least one, right? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have public comment? Anyone have public comment? Okay, do we have to go with an executive session for anything?
Usually we just only, we just say we wanted, so that we had it already for the medical condition.
Right, that'll be on the eighteen.
So you wanna write or at all, anything before nothing?
I'll supply it to you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis, at our last meeting, we, we, we were talking about, um, there was property on Lake Wood and, and Ford. Right, I just spoke to the building inspector, the owner has to give us a proposed deed. And once we get the proposed deed, we know what the meets and bounds are, what he's conveying us, then, then I'll, I'll, I'll give you my approval, then he can file and become the votes of the property. We wanna make sure he's giving you the right description.
Gotcha.
Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Wait, um, for the special meeting for my person to...
All right, right, Monday is, uh, okay. Monday at ten o'clock, then we have the meeting, for the work session.
We were asked to say before that mark, you know, the question, that's was the only reason today. It was only just to, everybody talk about one question we're gonna ask Heather to correct. So we have all, together the same team, you know, I mean...
Think it's better that she's there? If she's there, we just...
No, I know we're gonna ask, but he maybe has something, or you...
I'm good, I'm good with it.
You go for Monday?
Whatever you guys do with the budget, just...
I'm good too.
I, I would like to set up before Monday, before we meet with Heather, to set up a work session, which is, we don't have no vote, nothing, just to talk about the budget and see the corrections all of us. And then Monday, we meet with Heather.
What day is good with everyone?
Cause I'd rather just talk to her when she's there, cause she's the one you can...
But we, probably she might something, she might something different, we can talk about ourselves. We, we the one who's gonna decide about the budget anyway, and it's important to see every single member of this board about the budget and what correction we need to do before we go to the treasurer and ask him. That's the only thing we can do, that's it.
Okay, but any day of the week in the afternoon, in the afternoon? Because, um, after we met with the treasurer, we have to call with the department next to...
Thursday, Thursday I will, please.
Thursday, um, on Thursday, it's not so easy. Tomorrow? Or Friday?
Friday?
It should be for you two days.
Hmm?
If it's a special meeting, you have to at least have...
It's only a work session, it's open to the public.
But I still need at least forty-eight hours, just an emergency meeting.
It would have to be Friday then.
Friday, what time you gonna go?
Friday, four o'clock?
Okay.
All right, Friday, four o'clock.
It's only be like an hour Friday.
Okay, we're gonna go Friday, four o'clock.
For a work session for the budget.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Okay, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
TC?
Yes.
Have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Roque Paul Harmon?
Yes.
Larissa? And TC?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
First from the short meeting in history.